Two, can the board members introduce themselves, please?
Molly Friedland, alternate.
Mike Rich, board member.
John DeLeo, vice chair.
Rick Lyles, member.
Patrick Lyons, alternate that's voting tonight.
Yes, both alternates will be voting tonight.
Alternate.
Two, alternate two, yes.
And agenda item two is election of officers. Now considering our board chairman is not here and he cannot refuse. So I nominate John Fink as chair.
And John DeLeo as vice chair. Oh, wow. Such a change. I'm not sure I can stand this.
Again, I guess we'll have to nominate you as secretary.
You don't actually, you don't actually have to do that.
So do we want to take those one at a time or can we do all three at once?
Unless there's any other nominee, I guess you could do it as a slate.
A slate.
Any other nominations?
Those are the only three positions, correct?
Correct.
Second, those nominations.
There you go.
All in favor of the three?
Aye.
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 Adoption of minutes from the November 4th, 2021 regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions or comments from the board?
Very long.
They are so long.
Could be two days just to get through.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the minutes from the November 4th, 2021 regular meeting be adopted.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four amendment to an approved major use site development plan entitled Hughes Brothers Concrete Plant for Hughes Brothers, Inc., applicant Hughes Brothers, Inc. and property owner Hughes Brothers, Inc. with Mullen Landscape requested amendment to their November 4th, 2021 conditionally approved plan to remove condition of approval number five. If operations of the plant expand beyond the months of April through November, am either the plant owner seeking a building permit for the future batch plant building, the applicant shall return to the planning board to ensure standards and criteria will be, will still be met by the proposed expansion. The site is located on a portion of a 95 acre parcel located at 575 Bucksport Road, tax map 31 lot 47. The subject property is located in industrial zoning district. Is there someone here representing Hughes Brothers?
Yes, Janet Hughes, Hughes Brothers.
You have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you all for taking the time to hear our request tonight. At the November 3rd planning board meeting, planning board approved application for the major use site development for the ready mix concrete plant with those conditions that you previously mentioned. thereafter Hughes Brothers submitted an appeal to the appeals board. We submitted an application and then staff notified us that we'd not be able to begin our project or begin any construction if the project was under appeal. So after consulting with staff and then clarifying that with Ed Behr, then we made the conscious decisions to try to work with the staff in the planning board and come up with something that works for everyone. We're really trying to work with you. We're not trying to be a jerk. We just, we just can't work with the conditions that were placed. We can't operate. We'd hope to provide some clarification of our intent to the site and the thought was, you know, maybe the planning board didn't completely understand what it's, what it takes to operate that plant or operate any concrete plant. And in addition to turning the drum and making things work, there's other things that need to be done besides just the manufacturing process. We'd hope to provide you with the further information that's needed to remove conditions or if nothing else to ask you what it is that you need from us to remove those conditions. Our request is not to operate the manufacture of the plant year round. Technically, I suppose you could start up a plant and, and make some concrete, but you would be a fool to do so in conditions like in January and February. You'd just be hurting yourself and cost a lot of time and money in order to do that. So we don't have that intent. But what we would like to do is provide the information that we need to in one shot so that we can provide you with the information you need to ensure that we've, we're compliant with your standards. And right now, we, we really don't, you know, the way that the conditions were imposed, there was no discussion with us. We weren't able to tell you, you know, why that wouldn't, why we couldn't operate that way. And so we'd like that opportunity to do so now. So our biggest stumble was those conditions that were placed between April and November in operating the site. So, so if you manufacture the concrete, say the very first, the first of April, as you've imposed on us, then we need to be able to be on the site weeks prior to that just to start up the plant. If you, if you're thinking it's manufacturing through the end of November, we need, still need to be on that site in order to close down the site, to maintain the site, to do, to conduct improvements to the air emissions, say like replacing the bag house, which is your air emissions, doing any maintenance on the plant. You really can't maintain the plant during the summer months because you have to shut it down. Then you can't, then you can't manufacture concrete when you're shut down. So that's, an imposition doesn't happen, happens all the time. But when that does, your, your contractors aren't getting concrete. There's, there's many other tasks. We, through the year, your stockpiles, as we discussed before, you need three quarter inch stone, three eighth stone and sand, and those are in, stockpiled on site. And through the winter, how to keep your guys most efficient, you keep them operating through the winter. A lot of times that isn't your seasonal drivers. I certainly will, can tell you that if we started up there with five people in the, after approximately Thanksgiving, seasonal people are typically laid off. And the other folks, in that case, starting up two, you know, maybe three if you were, if you were, after we've been up and running for a while, you want to keep them busy there as long as you can. If it's frigid freezing cold weather and it's 10 below zero, are we going to be there? Absolutely not. Definitely not going to be there. We'll move those folks to our main facility in Hampden where they can work inside. A lot of times in the winter, you have that group, that's their, that's their home. The concrete plant's theirs. Their office trailer is there. Their paperwork, they have permits, they have environmental things that they need to do in the winter. However, we wouldn't move those people in frigid cold weather, say January, maybe February. But we need to be able to operate a site and be able to do so freely just to work cost effectively.
Now, did you say you would have an office type building?
Yeah, the plan shows that we have an office trailer on site and that's heated and powered through the winter all year round. And yes.
So the buildings that might happen on the site?
Yep.
Those are already shown in the site plans, is that correct?
Yes.
So from the planning board's perspective where we deal with setbacks and stuff like that, who have already looked at the buildings that you have or might have and said, okay, with respect to our action the other day? Now, you still have to come back for a code enforcement thing if they do a building permit, but that's totally separate, right?
Yes.
And at what temperature roughly do you, what's your, what's the lowest temperature that you really operate at?
It's really like continuously freezing weather.
Continuously freezing.
So if it's cold, it's 28 degrees at night, that's probably not going to bother too much. But if it's 28 degrees and 25 degrees consistently, then you're going to start getting pipes freezing and that and so that's time to drain the plant.
And once you shut it down, let's say at whatever date, just pick one. Let's say November 30th, you shut down because there was a stretch of really cold weather coming up.
Yep.
Are there circumstances where you might open it back up for a couple, three days in, let's say, in December?
If you look in December and you have a large project that requires a lot of concrete and, and you see a week's, week's worth of, of time to be able to, to get that project done, you could, then it might be justified. But to open it for a day, it's just, it costs too much money.
So if you saw that, that the weather was going to be quote, good for, or at least more, I guess?
Yes, like this year.
Well, yeah.
This year, like the middle of, you could run until the middle of December. If you don't have a project to bring it to, then you shut down early.
Sure.
But if you, but if you have, you know, local projects that need to get done, then you can. For us, what we, our, you know, the advantage that we have is once we shut down, then we can service them from our Hampden facility, which is fully enclosed and runs year round as well.
Going back to the approval that you had from the, you know, planning board with the proposed building and so forth, if that building were to, well, change appreciably, like three or four feet this way or whatever, would they have to, they'd have to come back to the planning board to get approval for that? Is that correct or not?
Probably not.
Okay, so that would take care of, in the code enforcement thing, if there were relatively minor changes to what was approved by the planning board? And that's okay. I mean, we've done that in the past, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the setbacks are very minor there and it's a large site unless it was like totally altering other conditions.
Yeah, making a Greek revival or something.
There we go.
But if we were to add another building to the site, we'd have to go back to.
Right, 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 right.
Environmental.
No, I was just talking about the ones that we basically said.
Yep.
Check on that. And, you know, what kind of changes to that building might trigger the need to come back to the planning board anyway. And what you're saying is, as long as you stay within reasonable bounds of that, you don't, they would not have to, correct?
And stay under 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
Now, if I remember correctly, that you wanted to do, let's call it a seasonal operation to look to see if this would be financially doable before you got to the point of.
If it's financially feasible to spend another $300,000 or $400,000 to enclose the plant.
And if that building was built, then it could become a, a year round operation?
Yes. Yes. And that's the only reason to build it. Only reason at all.
I don't recall, I mean, you said that there's going to be an office building on site.
Yes.
Now, this could be heated.
Yes.
And that's going to be used year round?
Yes, we won't, we, once we bring it in, we won't take it back out again. But it is a mobile office trailer. It's setting with inside the building footprint. And on that drawing, we showed the, the future building footprint with the office trailer inside of it.
But that does not have a bathroom? Because I remember you were planning on using a porta potty?
We're planning on using a porta potty. You can get office trailers with bathrooms, I suppose, if you needed to.
I was just going to say, any other questions from the board? I was going to turn to Elaine Hubbell.
Ma'am, were you done with your opening remarks?
Yes.
Well, yeah, actually, I'm happy to defer to Elaine on that.
I was just going to see from the city's point of view, pros and cons to their request?
Yeah, so I know I wrote a long memo and maybe I could have been clearer at the end. I think so. I have like two regrets about how this worked out, right? One is that the discussion didn't occur about how do we all feel about this condition? It was brought up initially in October, but nobody brought it up before. It was in the midst of emotion. So there was, it's true that there wasn't an opportunity to say, yes, we want to impose this condition to make sure X happens. The other is just a kind of wish that we hadn't even gone down the road of a seasonal concept and made concessions based on that throughout. So I think, well, I think that you shouldn't necessarily feel pressured to remove the condition because you do have authority to impose conditions if they help ensure that standards and criteria are met. So that's what I was trying to say. I think it was a generous interpretation of that. It enabled you to approve the project in a sense. If you think it would make more sense to remove the condition, which ultimately is like cleaner administratively for everybody, I think you need to impose some other conditions like there is going to be wastewater disposal. There is going to be water. It's a major use site development. That's why it's before you. That's what's required of those things. Yes, we've had other major use site developments that are maybe a solar facility or like a gravel pit. A solar facility doesn't have employees on site every day, long term. It doesn't have customers. It doesn't, you know. A gravel pit example, like places that we haven't, don't have a need for water or sewer, or we haven't imposed that on them under the major use site plan criteria and standards. Something like a gravel pit, you know, it's a natural resource use. It's not that different than logging, right? It's also limited in time and you're only going to do five acres at a time or something. Like you'd probably come back to the planning board if your operations expand, right? And it might be different if that's a pit that also does have an office and has customers coming in and whatnot. So I think that we were all trying to compromise, right? And we ended up in this in-between state of, well, this is what we'll do someday and we're showing you all those conditions to satisfy that, but this plant could operate as described indefinitely for 50 years with porta potties and no sink?
Now, I would ask, along that lines, if I remember correctly, Folsom, do they still have their plant in the Jordan pit off North Street?
I don't know for sure. I've heard it's been removed or it's not operational.
That it had been removed?
It has been moved.
It has been removed. That's what I heard. I've not been down there. And did you impose permanent water and wastewater on that plant?
Before my time. It was before everybody's time, yeah.
Really?
On the board.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not in the hemisphere.
If John Fink was here, he might be.
John Fink is very rare or something.
Yeah, so I don't know.
But I will tell you that we do have permanent water. We do have permanent drinking water and we have to have that, that water facilities extended to the plant area, including spigots and everything else that's required for drinking water. The water and concrete has to be potable and there is spigots. We needed to temporarily sink if that's what's required by your standard, we'd do that. This isn't anything new to concrete plants or, we have gravel pits and quarries. It's the same idea. There's porta potty there year round. That's what, that's what construction is. And there's a sink in the porta potty for sanitation of hands and whatnot. Right, but that remains, that waste remains inside of that. We have, we have like four facilities where we leave, we leave them year round. And if they needed to be functional, a lot of times they'll just drain them so that when we're not using them, just, you know, for, because it's a good thing to do. And if they need to, there's, there's, there's anti-freezing agents that they'll put in the system. Where would the groundwater go? The water, once you wash your hands, where would that dirty water drain to if you don't have a septic? The spigot is inside that containment area. So then any waters that, that are part of the process are drained into the, the washwater recycle. So it's considered washwater. But if they did anything, the only thing they'd be. Yeah, the only thing they'd be doing is, if they did anything, would be filling a cup, which they don't normally do because part of, part of OSHA, you know, OSHA, if you're worried about people work, workers, that's, that's OSHA. And OSHA requires that you have proper facilities and, including drinking water and sanitary facilities, including porta potties and/or permanent toilet facilities. And as far as drinking water goes, just like any construction site, that we, we, you, you either have to have the drinking water, you have to have bottled water, or you have to have, provide water in larger containers. And if you stop by our site one time, sometime, you'll see in our, in our, we have a little storage area and we keep pallets of water, which the, which our workers take with them. Same thing in a quarry and a gravel pit. You don't have a water supply. You don't. That's how, that's how workers on, on every, every facility meet OSHA.
If the, if we didn't change anything, okay, in other words, we left the conditions intact and so forth, and, and you operated within a restricted calendar, okay, and never actually built any kind of building, you would be able to have a trailer on site indefinitely and also a porta potty on site indefinitely? Is that correct?
Yes.
Under the, under the current approval?
Yes. We also, as you probably know, we, to meet the criteria for having a, a permanent wastewater facility, we had the soil testing done. So we'd cite the proper location and we had a subsurface wastewater system designed, which is also shown on your plan and I provided that in the application. That was just to show you that it, under those circumstances, that systems would be readily available.
And if you built the building to enclose the plant, would you anticipate at that point to have indoor bathroom facilities?
Yes.
And you would then use the septic design?
And they would have to come back for that, correct?
Currently.
Well.
Yeah, currently.
Currently, yeah. Anything under 5,000 square feet, the code enforcement can enforce.
I just want to clarify, like, I don't think that the way that the condition is written right now precludes a property owner from accessing their site, maintaining the grounds, visiting the trailer, working in the trailer. Like, we can't tell people they can't access their property and, and hang out there and do things there.
I guess that's probably where we, what we thought was being restricted was the operations to the site.
I mean, it's all, it's all a matter of interpretation. Once you write something down, right? So that's why it would have been good.
I don't want to speak for, for the applicant, but I'm sure they'd rather have a definite set of rules or regulations that they got to follow.
Right.
Instead of getting the operation up and running and the whole side of the city laying there and say, oh, the way I interpreted, you can't be here.
Right. Lori might not be here forever.
No, she, we, we let the last one go. She's here.
I think also, you know, we're, it's like we're going backward now. But if we had had this conversation in October at preliminary plan, the board could have had a conversation about like, is the drinking water and wastewater disposal criteria applicable? Or is there a waiver being sought? But instead, we ended up in this situation where it's like, here's the septic design and it might never get built.
We were just trying to show you that, that site have, that it will meet that criteria, that you won't get stuck with a site like that we had without being able to provide a permanent wastewater facility.
And we're talking about the prior discussion we had on, on this motion, and I had part of the prior discussion, but that only dealt with the coming back to the planning board for, if they wanted to enclose it. I mean, I talked, I didn't talk anything about the seasonal, you know, eight months, 12 months, whatever it was. So, and until we got to the point of that motion, that, that particular part of it was, was on the sheet before me. You know, I don't, I don't think we had discussed it. I don't recall you discussing it. I may be wrong.
No, I don't think that I did bring it up for discussion. But the, when I, I was combining what you had said.
Yeah.
With the representations and the realization that, and I kind of describe it in here, that if the only thing defining installing this infrastructure is building the building, which was with the note on the plan, then you could have this situation that's being described. Like, there was just so many repeated representations about seasonality and, like, it just didn't seem to all go together. And it was all throughout too. Like, part of the traffic generation numbers had to do with that and expanded over. And I guess I don't, I'm trying to remember what inspired exactly that. But it was a combination of all of those things of realizing that there was kind of a missing piece.
If they were to come back later or at some point and enclose the building and, and move the toilets inside, just hypothetically, okay, does code enforcement have a role in that then?
Yes.
Regardless of the planning board?
If she wants a building permit to do that enclosure, she has to get the septic system.
So that kicks in.
Absolutely.
Regardless of whether we have a condition here.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have some question, Patrick?
Alternate two?
I guess I'm just, so you start, how much are you investing in this before, as your initial phase? We're still talking substantial amount of money, right?
Yes. So I don't quote, you're wrong. The top of my head, it's provided in the application. Intro. 825,000.
Okay. And, you know, you, you proposed to have the mobile office 10 by 20 and someone will be there certainly through the eight months, but it sounds like you said people will be on site throughout the year checking on things and.
Yes.
So someone will be in that building frequently 12, 13?
Don't go knocking on the door in January and February because they may or may not be there.
Okay, but they may.
But there will be very, there would be very minimal activity in Janu, in January and February, I would say.
Okay. And then let's say you progress to the, you decide, okay, this is a viable plant or we think we can do this year round. And you build the year round permanent building. Would that change that the, then you'd be making, you'd be working 12 months a year?
Yes. Doesn't mean that your contractors will be calling for the concrete because they have, they are, you know, up against the winter as well. So not a lot of people build foundations and houses in the middle of the winter.
Yeah.
But it does, but there, there is demand for concrete. Happens all the time.
Okay.
More municipal projects and state, federal projects than residential.
Do you have a sense of what the investment would be for that building?
Probably 350.
Okay. I, I think my thoughts are that, you know, typically the rule is you have to adhere to every standard unless given, you know, a reason, you know, a good reason not to. And I guess my thoughts are if you're going to have people there most of the time of the year, even if it's infrequently in the less, you know, busy months, and, you know, then I think if you want to operate, be able to operate year round, then you should be required to adhere to the standards for septic and water. And for $850,000 investment, I can't imagine building a septic field system is that is going to, you know, is compared to the full cost of that, seems to be something that many developments would anticipate. And I understand this is a construction site based business similar to other construction sites and, you know, porta potties are common. But I think you're already full steam ahead, eight months out of the year. You're having people there every day. I don't, I think this is, I look at this as a, as a more or less a permanent operation, even if there's some seasonality to it. And in my mind, that requires that you should have to adhere to the, the permanent requirements of the septic.
Is there a permanent requirement? Is there a permanent requirement to the septic? That says you must, you must install a subsurface wastewater system?
Yeah, so the requirement for sewage disposal for a private system is you shall submit evidence of soil suitability for subsurface wastewater disposal prepared by the main licensed site evaluator or soil scientist, full requirements for the state of main subsurface wastewater disposal rules, that's chapter 241, I believe, of the
Right.
Department of Health and Human Services regulations, and for a business such as this.
And we have done that.
Yeah, I, I think.
We've done the design, we've submitted it to you, and it's not required by subsurface, by the state's subsurface wastewater disposal system to install them, because you have, because you have a worker on site.
Anytime you have pressurized water, though, you are required to have a subsurface system working.
Well, then, if that's the case, sorry to interrupt, Lori, if that's the case, we can't deviate from the state's requirements for subsurface wastewater rules. Those are a minimum bar, we don't have the authority as a municipality to go below that bar.
Right, because if you're washing your hands and you're doing things, all of that is considered gray water, and that needs to go into the subsurface system. Now, you could put in the subsurface system and hook the trailer up to it, which has a bathroom.
How do you, how do you do that on gravel pits?
They don't have pressurized water.
Yeah, they do, how are you gonna wash your materials?
So, I don't think that back and forth really needs to happen here.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, you know, I understand your, your position, I really do, and I understand that, you know, that this is, you know, in part, seasona- seasonality, but you're also building multiple permanent structures that facilitate creating.
Well, well, it, it has that appearance, but it's a portable plant, so if you pull into Ellsworth and you set up your plant, and things don't go well, and there's no demand, and it's not working well, you take your plant back down and move it somewhere else. So it's not a, it's not a, and if you, if you look at those drawings, what the plant is, it's, it's, it's a conveyor, it's a hop, two hoppers, and the, and its water source and silos, so all those things can be moved. So, if, and then those all go into a pot, which drops into a mixer, which then mixes it. So it's, it's, it, it seems like it, but if you look at my, if you look at the, the concrete plant itself is 450,000, right? So you, so if, if this isn't a good, a, a good thing, you pick up the plant and you take it somewhere else.
Sure, but the same, you can do that to a manufactured hu- house, and they're also required to.
Well, not quite as easy, you could take that plant down in two or three days and, and take it.
Sure, I, my point, and the point I'm trying to make to the board, is I view this, this, again, you know, on, on balance, it seems to me that this is a permanent installation that has some seasonal component to its operation, and the condition we imposed before was reasonable in that you were seeking exemptions based in part on the seasonality, and I was saying, you really need to be able to operate at any time. If that's the case, then those season- seasonal exemptions we granted should no longer apply, so I think it's.
With all due respect, there were no exemptions requested, zero.
Well, there were, I mean, you're, you're, we can call it a waiver, because under our standards.
We didn't request a waiver from anything.
Okay.
It would seem that there were certain things that might have been done, or could have been done, or should have been done, relative to waivers or not, or whatever, but it strikes me that, and I'm not referring, that we've already, you know, that ship has sailed, in a way, and that code enforcement will do whatever they can to ensure that these guys, you know, it's safe and all that. If we change the condition, and I can imagine getting rid of the condition, or I can imagine modifying the condition to, to, I mean, that, those are, you can do that, but if you start changing things up and say, oh, they, they have to obey this rule or that rule now, can we really do that? I mean, we've already approved it once, in essence. So, the only, it strikes me as that the only thing that we can fiddle with is, is this condition the way it's written, and we can modify this condition a little bit, or we could, I mean, that's, it strikes me, okay?
Well, they're all.
Or get rid of it.
They're all, either the condition or approving it without the condition, like, we're all toward the same goal
Yeah.
of this project meets everything, we're good to go.
So what hap- what happens if we, what, what's the risk, or what's at risk, if we get rid of this condition? And I ask, hey, what took you? That question? What, what happens if we, if we just get rid of it? Is that, what's the jeopardy there?
Perhaps we'd have another five full-time paid employees in our economy?
Is that a bad thing?
Around, I don't know if that's a bad thing. And if they, if they need to put septic systems in, they'll put septic systems in, they've done the design, submitted it. I hope the plant goes in. I, I mean, the permanent building would be great for our economy.
We do, too, we do, too.
And if you're meeting all the requirements, why, why should we limit the potential of what they're gonna produce?
I don't see how, if we require them to build a septic system now, that would.
We can't. There's no need, because they're not moving in that direction at this point.
Well, we, we just said they have pressurized water, so if you have pressurized water on site, main, right, state septic regulations require you to have a septic system.
Lori?
Is that?
You're the one who brought it up.
Yes, I, and initially, you know, I, I have no problem with the porta potties on site for limited employees. The reason she got the septic design was because she wanted to eventually build the building, which is going to house more employees, and that this was going to, the septic would care for all of those employees. And, um, I don't like seeing that they could possibly be using it to wash their bodies, whether it be just their hands, because, you know, people have diseases, you know, like, that can be passed through the water, and that water should go through a septic system. That water should go through a gray water system. If you want to just install a gray water system now, just to handle that, or?
We prefer to recycle, but we can placard it as no hand washing, and we can utilize the wash facilities that are in the porta potty.
That would be fine with me.
Which is a chemi- you know, just hand sanitizer.
And so she goes to build the, the big building.
Yep.
And if, and if they do build the building,
Uh-huh.
the code enforcement still has a say in.
Right, because I won't give her an, a, a building permit without those septic systems being issued at the same time.
Would not be issued.
No.
Right.
Understandable.
So that's the.
Yep, that's what holds anybody back, if you wanted to build a house, I need to know where your waste is going.
Right.
And so that's, it's, holds true for everything.
Well, Patrick, I mean, the applicant has used, she's correct, I mean, didn't ask for a waiver on subsurface, or whatever the state law is, I would guess that it's up to the code enforcement to enforce that.
Certainly, yeah, I heard Lori to say, they have pressurized water, they need a septic system, so I don't think we can grant that waiver.
Well, if she doesn't allow them to wash their hands in it, and it's only gonna be utilized for the concrete plant.
Then that pressurized water doesn't, okay, yeah, sure, I mean, I defer to Lori on that, I mean, the state makes code enforcement enforce, it's the state's septic laws. If Lori's saying that's, that, that setup
I would be satisfied with that.
satisfies the state's requirements, then that's fine.
I mean, were there some, some DEP oversight? Do they have anything to say about what we're discussing?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they defer, they, they.
Deferral locals?
Yeah, it's one of those laws where they're saying, here's all the rules, towns, cities, you go enforce it, but.
So it's okay, like, not to say that that's what we want them to do with drinking water, but no hand washing.
No hand washing.
Don't take your boots off, wash your feet. And if we placarded it to say exactly that,
Yep.
then you would be fine with that.
I mean, the provision that I, that I suggested, having to come back to the planning board, if they build a building, I mean, code enforcement still has that capability, that if we remove that stipulation, that they can, when they get, they get to the point of building that building, they can still say, you're going with the planning board. Even though it's not 5,000 square feet, Mar-a-Luz does allow that, I mean, because we were gonna, if that coffee shop ever comes, they were gonna refer that to the planning board. So, they do have the capability that, and I would still like that, that if they refer that back, if they build that building, refer it back to the planning board. I mean, this is industrial use, I think, I think it's a good idea to come back, but I'd leave that to the planning board.
So, under 5,000 square feet? Under 5,000 square feet?
They can, code enforcement can refer it to the planning board.
Because the bottom line, though, is that by getting rid of this condition, the applicant doesn't get carte blanche, do whatever the hell they want with these buildings, or.
Oh, yeah, right.
Or whatever, right? Is that pretty true?
Yeah.
Or completely true?
Yes. I would also just clarify, like, you know, we don't have a building of over 5,000 square feet. We don't have a traffic movement permit, it doesn't rise to that level. The reason that this is a major use site development actually was more to do with the size of the overall, it's like two-something acres of impervious surface. So, to the point about, like, if it doesn't work out, you can take it down and move on, there's still, like, that, that's a big thing, and those stormwater treatment areas are really big because of that, right? So, that was actually the threshold that more brought it here than anything to do with structures. Just to keep in mind, the permanence of that, right? I mean, I'm not really trying to sway you with that at this point, but just wanted to clarify.
Just to clarify, so as of right now, we're saying this type of activity doesn't tri- as long as the pressurized water is not used for any kind of hand washing, doesn't trigger the, meet the requirement to construct a septic system?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's just that, and that's the nature of this, so I don't, we can't, we're not gonna say, you still have to build a septic system anyways in that sense, but if you were to do any kind of increased, you know, facilities, you'd have to build a septic system, which you've shown you would, if you come, arrived at that.
Even if it's after the two years, all she has to do is take that septic design that she's had done by the site evaluator, take it to him and have him revise it, to change the date, which is very simple and is done a lot, because two years goes by fast sometimes when people are building and.
But, so like, what about, back to the, the drinking water question, like, when does any type of building facility company, you know, we know a house needs to have water for domestic use, but when does a commercial or industrial use need to provide?
It's just the pressurized water, anytime you have pressurized water, what, what are you doing with it? You know, is it running through the toilet, and then the toilet is going out to a ditch? I mean, it has to have the mandated wastewater facility for that pressurized water, when typically, you're gonna have a bathroom, you're gonna be doing dishes, you're gonna be doing all of these other things, and, again, you could have a composting toilet and just have a gray water system designed, which is a smaller system and doesn't usually create, is, take us up as much space, because it's only doing shower water, dish water, and sink water.
Well, perhaps I am misunderstanding the dialogue this evening, but I believe what we're discussing and clarifying is whether or not this operation's going to be seasonal, not wastewater and disposal of wastewater. And my understanding of the concrete business is, in fact, that it's very seasonally driven. If you've got frozen ground, you're not gonna pour cement. And so, if we're having a light winter, and there's a big project in town, and they can produce so many yards in December, they might want to choose to do that, and if we permit it, they're at liberty to do it. But if we're having a harsh winter that starts in October and goes to the end of April, and the ground's frozen the whole time, their business is gonna be impacting. So, it is a seasonal business, I believe that's what we're having the dialogue about at this table this evening, is whether or not to let it go from November to April. And my understanding of the sci- science of it is, in fact, it's gonna be weather-driven. And I don't know why we're spending so much dialogue on waste removal, when that's not what was brought to the table this evening. So, can we possibly come back to that, whether or not we're going to let them go in their operation between November and April as a possibility, which I believe is what we're discussing this evening?
Well, we presume we could, could simply make a, a simple motion to just simply remove that condition.
That's my perspective.
And I focused on water and wastewater, because I thought it was the clearest link between that condition and your desire to ensure that the project met all of the criteria.
I do, do believe that if they build this operation, and they do have 10 full-time employees at the plant year-round, then you will provide them with the necessary sanitary conditions to, just because it's a matter of so many different codes on so many levels. Thank you.
How about a simple motion? See where we are.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, well, we have to have a public hearing.
Hold on, there's no public hearing, anybody here want to address?
I would make a motion that we, in essence, we remove the condition that was put on this development at the last meeting, that we simply remove that condition, which is numbered, under further con- well, it's the only condition under further conditions, so that condition being removed from the approval. Want me to say all the, oh, that's where I am, sorry.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, any other question?
Well, what about the requirement that the pressurized water not being used for any kind of sanitary activities? Maybe we should, I mean, is that, do you feel that should be a condition of the approval? To clear, to ensure that they don't.
Is he asking me, or you?
I think he's asking you, but.
Oh, me, okay, yes, no, I do not, because we will be there, as the things are getting going, and we will see the placards, and I have great faith that it will be taken care of.
Okay.
And it would become problematic when they do build it and want water, right, so.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna say a permanent, but something, I just wanted to make sure, because that was, that's what's, for me, has addressed my concern, that if they're in compliance with the septic laws, then, you know, then I don't, there's no, then I'm fine with that, but as long as it's easily enforceable, then, yeah, there's no need for a condition.
Sarah? All unveiled?
Aye.
Charles it?
Thank you very much.
There we go. Go forward and make concrete.
Item number five, review and adoption of remote meeting participation policy. The floor is all yours.
Did you say the floor is all yours?
What's that?
Did you say the floor is all yours?
Yeah.
Yeah, all yours.
I couldn't really hear.
The floor is all yours.
Thank you.
You can only clean it up from April to November, though.
Oh, goodness. Okay, so, I prepared a memo with this for you, too, but, you know, you had remote meetings a lot in 2020, and even into 2021. Those were permissible under kind of like a temporary law that matched up with when we were under a state of emergency. We are no longer under a state of emergency and haven't been for like six months, so the legislature has enabled. So, the legislature has enabled public bodies, including the planning board, to adopt policies for remote participation, if that's something that you wish to have an option for moving forward. If we don't have a policy, it's not an option. If we have a policy, it is an option. Um, this, what I've presented, um, is pretty much word for word a template from our attorneys. I added a couple little sections, um, as described, like, to address some concerns that I raised about making sure we have a fair system, um, so that you can't say, well, I live in Boston and I've got COVID or something, so I don't wanna be there, get permission, and then everybody else still has to show up in person. I don't think that's really fair, and I think that that could open up issues, um, where the beginning of these policies, I'll say, like, none of this is a reason for appeal. Well, if somebody gets to present from a distance and everybody, it's just not equitable in my mind. Um, it's probably gonna be challenging as we move through it. We're gonna get a lot of requests. People ask us all the time now, is there a remote option? Um, we actually already have a local engineer who's gonna be here in February, who's asking about remote, because he's on vacation or something. Um, that's not really a good reason in my mind, so it's supposed to be applied sparingly. Um, on the other hand, if we're feeling like we're all here in masks, things are weird, it's, uh, the winter season, you could just go full remote for like three months at a time, or, you know, month by month make the call. And we'll have to handle some of the policy, or practice rather, um, wise of how to notify people and make sure that there's a way to keep up to date and everything for our last-minute decisions. But basically, this policy pretty much covers all the bases and gives you all of those options. Um, it would also apply to, like, subcommittees. If, like, a comp plan committee would be covered by this, and like whoever's chairing that can, um, can make those decisions in consultation with our office. So, it should be pretty airtight, and, um, it's mostly up to the chairman and the planner to work through as it comes up.
Well, we have the technology in place to proceed with whatever direction we choose to proceed with any particular meeting.
Yes. Yes, and I think, you know, there's, I was describing to Carrie earlier today about how pre-COVID, there was a lot of talk in the planning world about how to engage people more through the internet and social media and everything, and we have these antiquated meetings, blah, blah, blah. So, I see lots of pros and cons to just availing yourself of remote methods more frequently. I think it makes certain things a lot more accessible for people. On the other hand, I think it has negative outcomes in the way that people behave and conduct proceedings. So, that's why I think we kinda tread into it carefully, but use it as needed and, um.
But we did not have any problem, though, with, through the COVID thing, when we were playing remotely. I mean, there was really nothing, I mean, and that's not to say that that doesn't change, right?
Yeah.
But, but, but to this point, our, our experience has been good with remote participation and so forth, that correct? So, beyond that, and I, and I admit to even getting a little lost here in the legalese, I blame you. Uh, in any event, um, this strikes me as being pretty liberal with respect to participation. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, it's, there's a little bit of a distinction, like the subch, sections I added, I got feedback from our attorneys to, um, change them a little bit, actually, because, um, so I wrote them so that, like, if an applicant, or say you've got an out-of-state-of-butter who's like, I really wanna be able to comment on this, but I am in California half the year and I can't be there, um, you, that, the way I'd written it before was if they got permission, then all the rest of the public and the board members would also have permission to be remote. But that's an issue, because the standard for the board is the list of things of like, here's reasons. There's not as clear, uh, reasons for the public and applicants and everything. So, um, so it's a little bit stricter for you guys. I mean, it's still not, it's not terrible at all.
Would we have the opportunity, well, I, I guess it's council that actually adopts this, right?
No.
No, we don't.
This is a planning board policy alone.
Yeah, each individual body has to adopt their own, that's part of the law.
So, we'll post this on the website and, you know.
I stand corrected.
Yep, just your policy.
Well, it looks like, I mean, when, when somebody wants to appear remotely with being an applicant or consultant, I mean, it's gonna go to you, but it's the chair that has to approve it. So, I mean, seems like there's gonna be a lot of, well, not a lot, but I mean, so they have to ask you, and then basically the chair has to approve it.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably requests that are either gonna come well in advance of the meeting or right before it and be in touch with the chair, or in a case like tonight, the vice chair, and, um, and make those decisions.
But I was gonna, I'm, uh, I guess it's the second page, under number three.
Yeah.
Uh, B and C, remote participation by members of public is treated one way, but remote participation by consultants and staff is treated different.
Right.
I was just kinda wondering why one can get it and the other one can't.
So, those are the sections that I added, and so, um, what I wanted to do there was not, the way it was written without this, the, one applicant or, um, one member of the public could make a request to permit, participate remotely, be granted it, and nobody else would really have that option, so, or it wasn't clear, right? So, if, if an applicant gets it, then I think that the people potentially in opposition to that project should also have that option. Would they use it? Not necessarily, but it's just like an, a level playing field, right? Especially if part of their argument is distance of travel or something. Um, if it's one of butter or one member of the public who requests this special dispensation and it's approved, then why not all of the other members of the public? I think that does get complicated, because then are we talking item by item versus the whole meeting? Like, but then for staff, consultants, I figured maybe you do a peer review and you wanna hear from the engineer who's done the peer review and they can't be there. You make an exception for them, but you don't have to open up the whole meeting to the whole world just because of them. Or staff, you know, if I had an issue, but I wanted to be here to support you, like, and I could do it from home, like, that would allow me to zoom in and not have to turn the whole thing into a, um, remote meeting. And same with consultants, like, if it's a, applying to something like a comp plan committee, you might have a distinct consultant and want to be able to have those interactions or have the option for those interactions without needing to turn it into, half the board is sitting here, half the board is at home, half the public is sitting here, half the public is at home. Um, so I wanted to, like, make it fair, but also, like, leave some room for your own people you've asked to be here to give them that freedom.
I don't remember operating under the Zoom previously. I don't think any members of the public came in on Zoom, did they? I, I think, weren't you, wasn't, weren't you and Nate?
They might've had to, like, raise their hand.
Emails and stuff, I mean, we wouldn't, would we just allow them to participate via Zoom versus?
Yeah.
Needing someone to, or, let me check my email to see if somebody's called in.
And I was gonna say, you probably.
Yes, no.
Yeah, and you've been able to read the.
Correct, yes, at the time, we were, um, very much in Zoom only.
Yeah.
Uh, there were a number of the public that did attend remotely and did participate to ask questions, so. And, and those moments, because there was no option to be.
All right, the gravel, actually, the gravel, the gravel set up on 180.
Yeah, there was no option to be here, so.
Right.
Um, it had to be attended in that way, so, yeah.
But was it like, you, like, once you let them on the screen?
So, they could attend and then they'd raise their hand, ask a question, uh, via text, if you will, and then we would grant them the ability to actually join by video or, or audio, so.
And I think we have various options of ways to manage that, and we can figure it out as we.
Correct, yes, we, we have, we have, we have the technology to do it, yeah.
That you would facilitate not to chair.
Correct, yes, there would be requests from the chair to have us set something up, yes.
Yeah.
And whether or not we can accommodate, it depends on the request. I mean, for most parts, as long as it's like Zoom access-based, we can, we can do it that way, so. I think for most part, we'll be able to accommodate most everything, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think allowing the public via Zoom, I'm not so sure that, say, well, send in your email. You know, if we're allowing Zoom, aren't, uh, like Nate, read an email?
Well, I think we'll be, we can, you know, we allow people to send letters and then we'll read the letters.
Letters and Facebook and.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, yeah, I, unless somebody can't participate the way everybody else is, I don't think we're like monitoring email during it like, like they were before.
Yeah, just think of it as, if you wanna come to a meeting and speak, you wait your turn, so if you can, you sign up, you watch, participate via Zoom, and then if, when it comes to the public hearing aspect of the meeting, people raise their hand, they get promoted to a panelist, they're allowed to speak, we can interact with them, and then when they're done, they get, you know, sent back to the gallery, and then the next person can raise their hand, they get promoted. So, it can be very orderly, especially when you, I do this with like small towns and it's real cluster, but when we have actual like IT staff, people like.
Yeah, if you understand how it works.
Yeah, but it's saying it works, it's actually, I think it can be more orderly, because you don't have to worry about people yelling at you.
Well, yeah, you can, you can shut it down.
Yeah, you can just be like, oh, well, you're out of the meeting, you know, delete.
Exactly, you're, you're muted, you're done, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think, John, I've seen it done very well.
Yeah.
Especially with what we have here in the city, I think it would go, it'll go just fine.
Another question I have is on, on the VC. Uh, basically, when a meeting is conducted by remote means pursuant to the policy, any person intending to introduce any documents for the planning board's consideration are responsible for writing the chair or providing also an electronic copy of the document no less than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I tell you, I, I really don't think that's enough time, because basically, they're gonna get the document to you, and then you're gonna distribute it to the board, which means we're gonna get something, it could very well get something less than 24 hours before the meeting. And if it's before the final meeting, to tell you the truth, they, they need to have the stuff in.
Yeah, well, I think it's the same principle as if that happened in person. So, anytime that somebody shows up and wants to give you something, they should have enough copies for everybody plus the file, and it needs to be something that you can easily assimilate while you're sitting there. So, it's not like, oh, here's the traffic study, approve us, like, so. Some of this also is coming directly from the law, and I don't know if the law is perfect, right?
No, it's, it wasn't my favorite statute when I was an actor, it was really confusing, and there was a lot of debate among the legal and municipal community about what it actually means. But we've kinda, basically, it was, the intent was it to be, to give cities and towns more or less discretion on how they wanna run it. So, I think this is well drafted and actually provides some clarification to other ordinances to.
Well, that's good, like on the F, it talks about, um, okay, if we're doing it on the Zoom and, and let's say there's, let's say there's four members present, four is a court. Uh, it talks about, you know, maybe a member getting disconnected and then ends up getting reconnected. Uh, you know, should that person, that board member be allowed to vote? Should, I mean, if they feel still.
If they feel that they can, if they have enough knowledge, then yeah.
Leave it up to the board member.
If, you know, someone wasn't around for one meeting, but here's the second one, and they say, well, I've reviewed the materials and I feel as if I'm educated enough to vote on it, okay.
And if there was something super important, perhaps we would just repeat it for, for you, yeah, summarize the important stuff.
And this, and this would allow, so for example, you know, some, some of the applicants, you know, especially the solar guys from the line, I mean, those engineers and so forth are from, you know, land far, far away, meaning south of the border. Um, and, you know, they could easily share, screen share, you know, on that screen or whatever if they wanted to, I suppose, and that would be permissible, that correct?
Hmm, I think as long as they've also submitted.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 I mean, they do whatever they do, but.
There's some also, I think, we need to make sure that the public can see, which we have, again, have the technology to do, so. So, yeah, and I think, keep in mind too, like, it's not just about COVID ultimately. Like, if we have this policy in place, it probably saves us from a lot of what has happened in the past in the winter where a meeting gets canceled because of the weather, and then every project loses a whole month, right? So.
Would you agree with me that this is a fluid subject that's probably gonna be revisited?
I would.
Yes.
I would agree, and, you know, again, it's meant to be applied sparingly, right? So, um, I haven't heard John think thoughts on it, but we decided to get it ready for you, so.
Whereas than whatever?
Yeah, a lot of it's taken straight from the state statute and their municipal association kinda drafted a form ordinance. My guess is, is the towns, the cities' attorneys have just kind of used that.
So, we just paid for the free resource?
Yeah, I mean, don't, don't tell them I told you that, but, no, you know, and they've done it for other towns too, and I've done it for other towns, and you tinker, and then certain.
Yeah.
Boards have certain, you know, then, but yeah, it looks more or less the way, and it, important part is it has what it's supposed to have from the statute, and then, you know, we've added a little more nuance, which we're allowed to do, and I think it was a positive.
So, what do, what do we need from us? We just need a yay or nay on this?
Yeah, just a motion to.
We gotta have a public hearing first.
Oh, right.
Yes, that too.
Open a public hearing. Call us a public hearing.
Nicely done.
As well as I could've waited until Nate called and said, well, there's somebody.
Yeah, there you go. Called in. So, I would make a motion that we, uh, adopt the remote meeting participation policy as written.
Second.
All unveiled?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. We actually brought, you know, we have my Lars to sign tonight, so.
Okay.
I have a copy of that that's ready for signatures as well. Um, so I have a couple things to talk about. I left things on your desk, um, and also emailed them out. Oh, did that get all filled out?
Yeah.
Awesome, so.
Yeah, not John, obviously.
Let's see, what order did I have it on in the agenda? Okay, so workshops first. So, I know a couple of you have asked me about doing a workshop with the council, really before we even get into the meat of the work to lift the solar moratorium, so it's not gonna get lifted until we propose changes. Um, but there's a time limit, and we need to propose those changes within 179 days. So, believe it or not, we're like halfway through that, and it, I probably got a little ahead of myself trying to lay out all of the notice requirements and meeting dates and how we can get this, so, saving that for later. But what I would like to do is, if you're able, in the next week or two, we could do just like a, try to keep it short workshop just among ourselves to say, here's where we're at, look at what was written into the moratorium. Um, here's, you know, what we've seen since those were adopted, what new resources have come out since they were developed, um, that type of thing, and have, you know, that short kinda refresher amongst ourselves. And then hopefully, I haven't spoken to the manager directly about this yet, but maybe a joint workshop with the council in February? So that then we can move into the actual draft something, hold a gearing, you know, hopefully approve it or recommend it and send it to council for adoption. Um, so, maybe it wasn't the exact order that some were looking for, but I think it still lets us make some progress um, and be prepared for a joint workshop, so.
Okay.
It looks like you filled it all out, so that helps me.
The only, the only question I have about the workshops, and I, and I think it's all a good idea and all that.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Um, but I was wondering whether or not it might be appropriate or useful, uh, useful, more importantly, useful, uh, to have someone from the industry.
Sure.
Here as well with respect to, you know, if we start saying, well, you know, how many, how many solar panels does it need to have? does it need to have to be efficient? And we may or may not have a clue really, whereas someone, you know, one of, I mean, one of those guys that, that, I mean, they seem pretty knowledgeable and so forth and, you know, it might be useful to have them there to answer those kinds of technical questions.
Yeah.
But if, but if we do incorporate somebody or invite someone, it should be the same guy, guy being an asexual term. The same guy at both our little closed one and the more open one, so that you're not getting view at point A and then view point B and
Oh.
Is it doable?
To invite someone?
Short order to get an expert on a panel?
We can do it remotely.
Okay, I mean
True. Um, yeah, Jana has someone in mind who I think served as a, as a consultant on the project where we're buying credits from the solar.
Okay.
So that's probably a good, you know, not totally on the developer side or, or whatever.
I have to say that I've been pretty reasonably impressed with the engineers that have come here in general on behalf of the solar power industry. They, they strike me as being knowledgeable and pretty fair minded.
Totally.
But then again, maybe I'm just naive.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea for sure. We can drum somebody up.
No, I'm talking about you're naive.
Sorry, you could.
Is that, um, is that good on that topic for now?
Works for me personally.
Okay, and then just comprehensive plan wise, um, we are, I think we're gonna be ready to kind of open up. I'm not sure exactly which is going to come first right now, but we're ready now that like we got through like some busy planning board months and that gave me a little bit more time to look at this. I think now it's going to be tricky trying to schedule things with, dealing with this solar and getting it through the process over the next few months. But ready to both get an RFP out there and form a steering committee for the comprehensive plan. So what I distributed to you guys was just a brief individual survey about what kind of interest you have in participating in that process. Main law doesn't really specify the comp plan as being a planning board document, but in my experience elsewhere, New Hampshire in particular, it is a planning board pro, document. Like, yes, you are doing it for the whole community to adopt, but it flows through the planning board because it's a plan and you are the planning board, right? So I see us drawing, you know, one or two members who have a strong interest in it onto a steering committee, same with the city council. And then, you know, casting a much wider net to make sure that lots of various interests and, you know, pieces of the community are represented on a steering committee. And then there's so many different sections, topics that need to be covered that, you know, a steering committee would oversee the whole process long term. Then you could have subcommittees to work on like each chapter or topic area. And I listed them out as they are listed in the law, but maybe you combine a couple together for one committee or what have you. It's not necessarily that regimented. So I just wanted to, instead of trying to keep in my head like who's interested in what they're into and what their expertise is, like if you can just fill that out for me individually, then let me know how you feel about it and if you can't commit at this time or if you don't have any interest, like that's fine too. I just wanted to see how you feel.
I thought the comprehensive plan is revised and goes to the council and gets accepted. Would you then anticipate at that point that there may very well need a bunch of changes made in the ordinances? Because aren't we supposed to, our ordinance is supposed to kind of follow along with what the comp plan
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it would necessitate a ton of changes. Like, it would have to be a very different vision. But then you also have to think, like, our ordinance went through a massive change in like two thousand twelve, eleven. So assume, you should assume that those were all consistent with the two thousand four plan. Were they? I don't know. But I'd have to read the whole ordinance and the whole plan and think about it all at once, right? Which eventually I will get there piecemeal, but I, I mean, I don't think we're going to go from saying we're Ellsworth and this part's rural and this part's urban to we're Ellsworth and it's going to be fully industrial or something. So, um, yes, work will come out of it.
I'm fine too, man.
But it's not going to be, I don't think, like urgent. We need to fix the whole ordinance just because we adopt a plan.
Yeah, I mean, the plan, the plan is, is just that, a plan. It's generic and whatever. The zoning ordinances and so forth are, how do you achieve those things? I mean, in essence, one thing is the vision, one thing is the rules together.
Exactly. It's a vision and it's the rules.
I mean, if something major changed and it was like we drilled a bunch of wells and put in water towers and we didn't need Branch Lake anymore and the comprehensive plan twenty years later recognized that and said, our water source is now this, then a recommendation would be to eliminate the drinking water zone, right? And your zoning would have to change to, to find out.
And as we've said, along here, there's been a couple, three different times where we said, wow, that should be changed in the, in the ordinance regardless of whether there's a comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think I would like, kind of say, like, the comp plan is incredibly important and it's a shame that it has been like swept aside. But I think that's happened in many places and that there's a relationship to things that have gone on at the state and funding available and whatnot. But at the same time, like it's become the, the conversation in the community has come to like, put a lot of emphasis on it and put a lot off toward it. It's like not our savior, you know, but it is very important, so.
A lot of it has to do with, I mean, the state says, okay, you gotta do this every ten years or whatever, but eh, we're not really going to check to see if you do it. And that's kind of where it seems like it's been.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I, I worry that the state says you'd have to have one.
Yeah.
And I think that that's where the state engagement, other than when we start saying, well, let's do this to a state highway. I mean, but that's where the state's engagement really should stop. It's just like, yeah, you have one and you should be planning accordingly or acting accordingly.
Our city has the potential to go through a dramatic change over the next ten years. And I think it's critical that we put some very complex thought and planning behind where we want to end up as a city and what we represent ten years from now. And the only way we're going to get there successfully is if we have this plan in place. And that's our guiding doctrine. And of course, that's going to be shifting as things progress. But we are a growing city and let's make sure we do it well for the future of our citizens' lives here.
And it's a, it's a serious undertaking. It is a lot of work and that's
Two years minimum, right?
I think that's, yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
They say, you know,
Officially at this point, we only have the money for
Just start. Well, so that's part of the challenge in writing an RFP is like, how do you, I've been thinking about it, but like, how do you write it to say, we have this much and we need this much and we might have this, so it's possible. This just needs some, some doing and of course, we're coming up on budget season and
We have all this surplus right now, don't we?
I don't know about that. There's never a surplus. I think, you know, the other reason not to kind of panic about inconsistencies, well, it's more zoning and, and land use focused, that's the, the legal concern. But take a look at the existing comprehensive plan. There are still many things that staff, boards and commissions have wanted to do, still want to do, that were identified as goals eighteen years ago. So, but like some things are going to be a lot different and some things aren't going to be different at all.
Is money the main reason that it's so outdated?
I mean, I wasn't really here in the whole two thousand fourteen through now or two thousand, whatever through now, timeframe.
You assume that's why or?
I mean, I think in the recent past, I think there's been requests to the council during the budget process to fund a new comprehensive plan and, well, not this year. And I believe that's come up several years.
Yeah.
Right, just in the time I've been here.
Well, and I seem to remember that there used to be funding.
The state used to
Yeah.
Annie up the thing, right?
I think, I think
Strategic Planning Office, yeah.
Right, which also that office was eliminated ten years ago and and now there's like, there's people spread throughout different agencies doing related things, but the planning assistance program is two people for the entire state.
And they don't have the part of money, I don't think that they have the part of money that they once had.
So that's a little piece of it, but it's also, you know, in the scheme of where funds can be invested, it's worth it.
And in the, in the upcoming budget season, when we talk about, when you or whoever talks about the plan in that context, is that the second chunk of money or is that still the first chunk of money? I mean, we went through the last year and they basically, I mean, my understanding was that
It was presented as a first chunk.
Right. And then this would be a second chunk now, then?
Yeah, I, I think that's how it's going to be approached. We haven't really had those conversations quite yet or talked much about budget yet this year, but yes, it was kind of set up like in a reserve account.
I mean, have you had any thoughts about, I mean, at some point, whenever you're going to put out an RFP for, let's say, the first half? But should that wait until after the council decides whether the second has to be funded? I mean, I'm, I'm almost afraid that you'd have an RFP, get one consultant, then get the second chunk of money two years from now and have a different consultant.
Yeah, that's not really ideal either.
I think that's a challenge for the writing of the, of the RFP.
Yeah, I mean
I don't think you'd want that really.
No, probably not. I think
But that means you don't write the RFP until July first?
We're not waiting, no, we're not going to wait for that.
You can make the second half of the contingent on funding and just say it would be our intention that
Yeah, I think you just be transparent with your bidders and say, this is what we have, this is what we anticipate, this is our timeframe, this is what we need. And, I mean, honestly, then it's, if you end up not getting the additional funding, then that was transparent, but you also don't get the outcome, so.
You're going to be a little reticent not to give you the second part, I would think, I would hope.
Well, that's the purview of the council though, isn't it?
Exactly.
And I mean, again, I
They're thinkers that they are.
I wasn't, I came in like after the budget was already, I think, mostly proposed. So I wasn't fully there, but, um, it was very much presented in the concept of, we're starting with this. And probably we'll be back, so. And I think that's how it was presented sort of in past years. I don't think they were asking for, I don't know, maybe not.
The fact that Barbara Harper has basically gone ahead with a consultant, which for a big chunk of money, should be a message that is not lost, hopefully not lost in the council, that the pile, the little pile that we already have, or you all already have, is really just part of it.
Yeah, I mean, the pile that, the little pile that we have, where I came from, that's what we spent every year and a half, two years on one chapter. Because we would do a rolling chapter update. So, I mean, you have the list in front of you on the little sheet of all the different topic areas that need to be covered. And they each, that, each of those, that's like you're making sure you have all the current data and you got to match it up to a whole bunch of different state criteria, that the link that's on the back. If you go there, you can see all those. I mean, it's data gathering, analysis, public input. That's really the biggest value, I think, of a consultant is facilitating the public process. Because not everybody's good at that, right? So they can help and, you know, get people talking in the right fashion. And then the actual writing of it and outlining goals and identifying, you know, what's the timeframe? Who's responsible, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I mean, let's say you put out an RFP in a couple of months and it comes back that, you know, the consultant says, okay, I'll do it for three times for what you currently have.
I mean, this department tries to work within its budget, but the rules get bent in other places, right? So we'll see what happens.
No, and I mean, for whatever, you know, hopefully, you know, the council will come up with some more money in the next fiscal year, but you really don't know how much it's going to be until you hear back from the bid process to see what the bids would be. I mean, maybe one of them, you know, like building a new bridge and, you know, new bridges now are twice as much as what they were two years ago.
I mean, we have a general sense of what a good plan costs, but then you gotta be on somebody's timeline too, right? We're making some progress. Hopefully we don't get too busy with applications and get too far in the weeds with solar. Shouldn't be too difficult. We keep it simple. But yeah, if you, if you would just get those back to me, really whenever, but, you know, I would appreciate just knowing where you, how you all feel about the process and what you're interested in, that's all.
Well, I for one, I'm glad to see it at least be launched, so first things first, right?
A little step.
Baby step, right?
Yep. But you're right, it's kind of a chicken and egg.
No, no, it can go tough. I mean, the whole thing, I mean, even if they commit all the money and they're all good with that.
Well, don't manifest that.
You get a change and they're saying, I don't think so. That one fired. Jana fired, you fired.
Well, there was, right before the meeting, I thought my, you know, email about the current week's issue of the newspaper and they did an article where they talked to council and all kinds of different people around the community about twenty twenty-two and it leads off of the council chairman pointing straight to the comp plan and talking about that. So I think that's a priority to many of our leaders, right?
It's out there in public.
I wouldn't get too pessimistic about it now that we've got to start.
I think once it gets rolling, I mean, I agree.
Yeah.
Once it gets rolling, I think the chances of it being stopped are
Oh, yeah. And I mean, this is like very valuable to me personally, professionally, to go through this process, right? Like I really want to see it go well too.
Really? Okay.
I mean
What a surprise.
All right. Anything else on?
No, I'm done.
Oh, we have, do we have my Lars?
You do.
We'll adjourn after we sign the miles.
Right, all right. Was there a public hearing?